Do we have Pastor Kenneth Hollins with the New Baptist Missionary Baptist Church?
He was early, he's running.
Okay, would you come up and open with a prayer for us, please? Thank you.
Shall we pray? Father in heaven, we are thankful to you for your multiplicity of blessings, your love, your kindness, your tender mercy. Thank you for allowing us to be here on this eleventh day of a new year. We pray your blessings upon these proceedings. We pray for this board president, supervisor Beverly Martin, continue to give her wisdom and understanding to be the kind of leader that you're calling for these last and evil days in which we live. We pray God for the entirety of this board. We pray for our sheriff here and all of the officers who strive to keep this county and its citizens safe and sound, but not only those law enforcement officers of God, but law enforcement officers across the length and breadth of this entire nation and all of those who work in public safety. We're asking you to look and have mercy. We pray for all who are here in this session. We pray for every family represented here. We thank you for your darling son, Jesus Christ, that one who died on casualty, was buried in a borrowed grave and rose early on the third day morning with all power in his hands. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. God bless you guys.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the digital, liberty, and justice for all.
Let me just say, we invited the man to the table. Okay, Mr. Ramsey, which you can come forward and give your name and address. And let me remind you, you've got two minutes and Miss Wickens will be our time keeper. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Gilbert Ramsey. I'm a military veterans outreach specialist. I've been working on this project 12 years since Governor Barbara Day's top of Hancock Bank. I'm here to introduce it appropriately. We have been internationally recognized with this opportunity. What I'm introducing is non-government official, public private partnership, international recognition. One Coast Initiative, Blue Way by Way, Quality of Life Blue Economy, USM Initiative, Marine Education and Technology, Miss Cluster, academic success regardless of physical impairments, loved ones and caretakers amenities, U.S. Chamber and VA Innovation Human Center Design, Hire Heroes and Spouses, United States Chamber of Commerce, Build the Skills Economic Development Administration, Enhancement Recreation, Tourism and Economic Development, Workforce Development, Retained Students, Internship Apprenticeship Programs, Higher Learning Education, MDA Exporting Sponsorship. We're looking at sponsorship for the Coliseum to bring Washington to us with Senator Roger Wicker, USPTO, and everybody. So what I'm doing is District One, Phase One, we're looking for a special use permit to initiate our outreach location. And what it entails is City Diablo just built a new park for us. I initiated it with the city as long as Paulsbury Causeway as well. So what we're doing is coming forward more amenities and further up creek. So what we're looking at, District One has two locations. And if this location needs an engineering and recreation department to assist me with this program to introduce it to the Southern National Forest. Okay, so this is all composed in my head and heart. We have a production team to do commercials. I need permission to do commercials in Harrison County. So I'm helping y'all out. Internationally, I've been recognized. Gate Sports Initiative with the World Health Organization. I can go anywhere in the world. The reason I'm staying here, my mother's buried in the National Cemetery. She's recognizing Nelson Mandela at her services. I've been going to the same church since '67. I've been here since '67. I'm trying to help you understand this. We have a veteran bottled water company. We're going to introduce everything on our next meeting at this, at Gepport location. All my brothers are stepping up with us. We're coming forth to help the church implement it appropriately. Thank you much for your assistance and guidance. Y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey.
We'll go on to item number two. Let's recognize the Sand Beach Director Chuck Baltus and Dax Alexander with BMA to discuss the condition of the outfalls and the sand beach.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. As you have noticed, Dax's firm did inspection after the hurricane and numerous tropical events that we had this past year. And we have some serious issues with our outfall structures on the beach from the storms that we had the previous year plus this year. It's something that we have to really get on. It's something that's in dire need and Dax can explain that a little bit more.
Sure. Good morning. Good to, I hadn't been to one of these in a while, so it's good to, good to be at one of these public meetings. So we've been watching this and by my, the last time the county did some work in early 2018, we did for nourishment at the beach and some Mount Falls. Just a little check in on the last few days. We've had one tropical storm or hurricane in 18. We had three last year in 19 and we had three that either impacted or came close enough to put some waves in high water in '20. And of course, Zeta was most damaging of those. But we, where the, the beach width is concerning. We've lost a lot of sand material, so the width is concerning in a number of places. I'm just kind of refreshing over a few notes, but 66% of the beach is less than 150 feet wide. And so your normal width is 200 feet. And so a good bit of it is, you know, lost a lot of sand there. And then the, the outfalls, as the, as the beach exposes, the outfalls and they, they become more susceptible to wave damage, wind damage, that kind of thing. So they're, they're having a challenge. A couple of things that are going on, I guess, we sent a little bit of information to a FEMA person in November after Hurricane Zeta. And at the time, the declaration had not been approved, so we, we haven't done anything. I would expect him to be contacting us fairly quickly, see what FEMA can do. I've also been talking to Justin McDonald at the Operations Branch, the Corps of Engineers in Mobile. And so they're working on funding from their side as well.
What kind of money are we looking at?
I, I think big picture, we're in the $5 to $10 million range. And so what I, I think the next steps are to see what, I think it, within a couple of weeks, the Corps ought to be able to tell us what they can do. I think in a few weeks, we ought to be hearing from and sharing some information with FEMA. And so we'll know a little more there. And I think I'd sit tight on doing anything till we see what the Corps and FEMA can do with their part of the funding and all.
Did the wave outfalls bode better? Did they handle it better?
I, I don't think they, they're not damaged and they're cast in place. So they're, they're, they're big structures and they're, they're poured monolithically where these pipe outfalls are eight or 12-foot joints. And so they, they have a tendency to get bounced around a little bit more.
Do you foresee any different design for those pipes? They're, they're very unattractive, of course, but, but the wave may be a little bit more than we can bite off as a county.
The big box culverts you're talking about?
I'm talking about the small, small concrete pipes.
That everybody thinks it's a suit.
We, we need to take a look at that and see what we can do to make those more attractive. So I, I agree.
Well, not only attractive, but they're, they're a maintenance issue. I used to get calls all the time, well, still do, but I get calls every time that one of them plugs up, it floods the upper up ones, so.
All the wave boxes that were put in are just north of Deer Island. So that was a big protection from this last storm. So none of those are in the open like the, are open channels and our outfall pipes.
But you said the outfall pipe might need some new design or something?
Well, it definitely, all the cradles that hold the pipes in place are missing, are damaged to one way or the other. So it's something that we're either going to have to go back with it the same way or come with a different design and put it in place.
How healthy is our sand beach fund? I'm looking at our comptroller back there.
Um, it's good. You know, has some, some money in there. We also have.
Does it have $10 million?
This is a fund. They could probably cover some of that projects, the next scope of work that's maybe in line with GMSA funding.
So we can do matching if there's any match too?
I, I really think there's a good chance we're going to get some FEMA or Corps funds in this, in this round. And so in either case, we need to be, you know, working to resolve our aesthetics and operational issues.
We had talked one time about some spray stations along the, along the boardwalk. It was part of one of the plans for a connectability in their community. Have we talked about that any further as far as having like spray stations for?
Water.
Water.
I'm not sure. There's only a couple of locations along, where we have water on the south side of the highway. We could do it in those locations, but other locations where there is no water availability, you'd have to bore under the highway and then through the seawall, so.
The time before Katrina, we had, we had pipes under there. We put them, we put a conduit under there.
Yeah, we put conduit for lighting possibly at a later date. Yes, ma'am.
Right now, we need to get these outfalls repaired.
Yes.
That's right.
And get the sand beach replenished.
That's right. I'm, I'm, it's, it's as poor condition as I can recall.
Yeah, it looks pretty bad if you look at your attachment on there.
Dax, in your report, you say rotten timber anchors. How many?
Well, there's, there's about 190 outfalls and about half of them have rotten or deteriorated anchor structures. So it's, it's, you know, 90 or so.
So the, you know, the wood starts getting rotten and then when you add that wave action that comes and it hit it and it destroyed it from all the tropical events we've had over the last two years.
I just think there's a better answer than using wood in this day and age.
Well.
That's my, yeah.
Point taken, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's right.
Any other questions?
So where do you want to go from here? Do you want to evaluate what needs to be upgraded and?
I want to see what FEMA and the Corps are going to do. And I think we ought to have some information by, you know, early February. I don't know if we'll have it for the first meeting, but we ought to have some feedback from them.
So we're just.
Be able to report back to you. Yeah. Yeah, it may be that the Corps could pay for most or all of it out of their pocket.
That'd be great.
And so I think we need to wait for that opportunity.
Smart. Don't forget, any of those outfalls drain the highway.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Although they're broke, does anybody else?
That's right.
They build a bunch of walls along Highway 40 now.
Well, that's true.
Not sure why.
Some walls out there on 67 about the shooting match, about shooting deal.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, for always doing a great job.
Sure, thank you.
So we'll go to number three. Recognize Bobby Niesel, Port Commissioner, as he discusses a base on the port projects.
Good morning. Robert Niesel, 111 London Lane, Gopport, Mississippi. How are y'all today?
Good. How are you?
Good. Just to give you an update on our progress at our port and the status of it, you are probably aware that Jonathan Daniels left us in June and we've been on a search for a new director and we narrowed it down to a couple of candidates. Probably making it offer the next week or so and negotiating the contract.
Can we get Demain up?
Of course, I'll bring him here.
I mean, the whole Tyra?
That said before that.
And you know, I'm one of five, I'm your representative, but the governor points three of us and the city one. But I've not, hadn't really had any input from any outside agency. The governor's just trucked them as, we're going to present it to all y'all before he's publicly, well, yes, we'll make an offer to him and negotiate a contract and then introduce him to you guys. But otherwise, our second in command, Matt Lipiski, has been running the operations and John Brester, he's a port commissioner for over 20 years now. He's been helping on the day-to-day stuff. He's retired, so he's been going in on staff meetings and making sure everything's running smoothly. And it is, we've got a great staff there. That several employees have been there over 20 years and they know what to do. We, we do have a permit to fill another 160 acres in the port on the west side. And of course, it's about a million dollars an acre to fill it, so we're not jumping on that hand. We're looking, aggressively looking for tenants to help fund that, which on a global basis, that's no money to them, 150, 160 million dollars. They deal in billions, so we're actually pursuing some tenants for that. We're also talking to a company, a global company, to take over operations of our existing facilities. And they own a ship, they own several shipping lines. And they will bring in their own ships and probably, they're, they're telling us they could double our port capacity in the next two to three years. And that's what, we've been kind of stagnant the past year. We've actually seen less containers coming in. Ships are still coming in, about three a week, but they're, have less cargo, I guess. Pandemic and things like that has affected in the economy. But we're also, we've been designated a strategic port for the military. We're bringing in loads of equipment. I'm talking about big equipment, tanks and helicopters a couple of times a year now. It really helps the ILA, the local union guys get a lot of work out of that, so they're real appreciative of it. They were going to Houston, unloading and transporting my truck to Camp Shelby. That just didn't make a whole lot of sense. So Jonathan actually was the one that pursued that and got them coming here. And we're, we're also applied for a permit to widen and deepen our channel. Right now, our channel dips about 36 to 38 feet, which is not competitive for the bigger ports that are like 45 feet and deeper. So we've applied for a permit. We're trying to fast track it. It still, it still probably means three to five years to get a permit. And it's several hundred million dollars also. So we've been working with the Corps of Engineers on funding of that and, and we're going to have a match of probably 20 to 30%. So our revenues are strong. We're, we're having some good revenues every year. So we're actually thankful on that to help pay for the funding of the widening and the deepening, which is going to be a significant amount of money. And that's really, we've been considered a niche port because we're between New Orleans and Mobile and we're trying to get out of that classification and get to more volumes. We can do that with some bigger operators, international operators, and we're, we're pursuing that pretty heavily right now.
Is the international operator, the guy from Turkey, is that who we're talking about?
Yes. He's number 12 in the world as far as international shipping. He actually owns a third, 30% of an American shipping company also that's bringing a lot of work to New Orleans port right now. And he's going to direct that to Gopport once we make the deal. He has to go through a federal process called CFIUS to, just any international company has to go through this. He actually applied for a bid in California, taking over part of their operations, Port, well, Port of Long Beach, and came in second. They actually sold a part of it to a Chinese firm. And he was pretty disappointed in that. So he really wants to get a foot into the United States. But we, we've vetted him out and the company is a great company. He's, he's got family that lives in Phoenix. Kids went to college there, his wife lives there. Pretty good group of guys, but he's actually got the coronavirus now. Actually lost one of his top guys a couple of weeks ago. I know, but we're looking for great things from them and we've got those three cranes down there we paid $30 million for. He's going to bring in bigger cranes over the next couple of years once we get the deal done. Our cranes are too small for his operations. And he's planning on investing, you know, tens of millions of dollars once we get through all the process. Otherwise, we're in great fiscal shape. Olive Beach Casino used to generate about 60% of our revenues, down to about 30%, 30 to 40, so we're not as dependent upon them. And their revenues have actually since July, in spite of the pandemic, their revenues are up 11% in Olive Beach.
You can thank sports betting for that.
Probably so.
That's the answer, but yeah.
That is a big deal, no doubt. But otherwise, we're in great shape and we're, we're under construction out on $30 million Ocean Engineering Group, I mean, facility that the NOAA is going to take a big part of. They're working with University of Southern Mississippi on some new technologies, underwater drones and things, so. And they're going to move in some high-paying jobs into that building once we finish, next year somehow. Otherwise, we're in great shape. If y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, are y'all still having ships come in that are full and then leaving empty to go back and forth?
Well, they, a lot of them are. Chiquita and Doyle own their own ships, so they do their own thing. Crowley brings in ships with clothing and things. Then they'll actually transport out cardboard and things like that that they make the cardboard boxes out of, so they, you know, pot paper and things like that. They all try to get traffic going both ways. Doyle and Crowley, I think they do on inter, it's not guaranteed, not every ship, but they do pretty regularly.
Is, is there a possibility, I'm sorry, I should ask permission, but is there a possibility? We have a glut on the market right now for recyclables, plastic especially, and glass and paper. But do you think that there's a possibility that we could, y'all could start looking for, and the Development Commission as well, start looking for someone that would take our recyclables? China has stopped. So if we could find someone there, we might be able to transfer it directly to our, and not have to go to Florida to get to, to have it separated.
Yeah, it's possible. I hadn't, wasn't aware of that, but I'll check with Matt Lipiski. He's kind of running things right now.
Maybe the guy from Turkey would have some contacts.
He might, yeah, because they're, they're all over the world.
But it's, it's a big problem for Harrison County right now. We're just barely, it's cost us a lot of money.
Okay, yeah, I'll bring that up to him.
And I mean all five cities in the unincorporated area as well.
Sure, absolutely. Nobody's thought of that before yet, so I'll bring it up to him.
Better than leaving empty. Tire recycling is also kind of at a standstill. And they put off more BTU than wood if they're put in an incinerator and if they're shipped overseas, they don't have the restrictions we do for air. So they have to have good scrubbers if they have, if they burn tire chips.
Sure.
But that's another one.
I got you.
Thanks.
We'll definitely check in on that. All right?
Congratulations on your grandson.
Well, thank you.
He's beautiful. He is Don Cendro, by the way, so I've been lucky to hold him and he's my son. Congratulations.
It'll be great.
He's beautiful.
Looking forward to it. Son and daughter-in-law are tickled to death. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four. Order concurring with resolution of Harrison County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of two acres of real property to Jet Claude Holmes for the purpose of operating and storage facility, having the purchase price of $62,000 and authorizing the board president to execute all necessary documents. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item consent agenda. Items number five through 10 have been placed on a consent agenda, same apparently routine non-controversial matters on which all supervisors are likely to agree. Do we have a motion to alter?
No.
Do we have a second? Then we'll discuss.
Okay, under discussion, I just have a couple of questions for number eight. I saw the, the price of a dollar per, per document and this one does et cetera, but is there an additional contract fee for the transferred clerk?
It's just a total of $3,000 for the preparing all of the homesteads that come from the tax assessor's office. It's deposited into this fee account and pays our three clerks.
Does any of that money go to the state? No, it's only delinquent?
Yes.
So all delinquent?
It's not delinquent, it's our homesteads.
Homestead, I'm sorry.
We have a homestead application.
Yeah, homestead. So the, all the homestead, I apologize. I was thinking about delinquent. I paid my taxes though, so it's not. So, so all of the money goes into the fee account and then, and who?
It pays our through land redemption clerks, Sarah, Patty, and Rachel.
Okay. That was my question. I just wanted to see if there was additional fees besides the fee that is attached to the paperwork.
Aye.
Okay. And how many of those do you think you do a year?
I think there was ever 3,000. Homestead, new homestead applications. I didn't get the correct total for you, but probably around 3,000.
And in, in other counties, have you ever, is there anybody else that does it or is always a transferred clerk?
It's always a transferred clerk. Nobody wants to do it for 3,000 dollars.
Yeah, I understand. That's why I was checking. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 10. Order acknowledge and receipt of checks, any amount of.
11. 11. 11.
Excuse me. Under tax assess, order acknowledge and receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2020 real property roll as recommended by the tax assessor. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. This is $200,000 that is in reductions. So I wanted to reiterate to the board that we don't know what this Corona is going to bring. And also looked at some of the budget items and a lot of people, a lot of departments know a lot, several departments are over budget right now. Hopefully they'll correct itself by the end of the year. There's something I think we should keep an eye on when we're looking at our, because these come through our reductions, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it if it's done incorrectly, but if we can keep an eye on the balance, I guess our comptroller will take care of that fast. So you know how much totally, our total of reductions in our budget?
I will update this spreadsheet. I did not get this information to include this agenda, but I will update it and submit all the different.
So we can get an accumulative idea of all of the reductions.
Well, and it's going to depend upon each particular tax district because there's separate tax rates.
I know, there's 37, right? 37 taxing.
I'm not exactly sure. There are lots.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm sorry, are any of these erroneous or is this just they reassessed and they're decreasing and why just the, this Paula? Has she talked to anyone about it? I mean, I don't.
Those are mostly probably people that's getting such set exemption. It goes from, from 15 to 10%. So that's, most of them, that's what the differences are.
Okay.
Unless something has been disclassified, they get a reduction.
So a refascification, okay. Thank you. Okay.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 12. Order approving the final class of Southern Oak subdivision phase one located in section 37, town 67, range 13 West, supervisor's voting District Three, as recommended by Jackie Turner, Harrison County Engineer, and authorizing board president to execute the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 13. Use for consider approving MOU between Harrison County and Stone County for the housing of Stone County juveniles at the Harrison County Youth Detention Center and authorizing the board president to execute the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Discussion?
Is it the same amount I guess of county taxes?
Yes. Okay, no more discussion. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 14. Sand beach. Order approving payment to Brown Mitchell and Alexander in the amount of $6,175. For engineering services available from 156355555 is recommended by Chuck Baltus, Sand Beach Director. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 15. Order approving the four-year road plan as recommended by Tim Smith, Road Manager and Home Files Club to the board. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Or a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen, order approving MOU between Harrison County and Mississippi Emergency Management Agency for Hurricane Zeta Assistant Center to be located at nine, two, two, nine, US Highway forty-nine Gulfport, and authorizing the board president to execute the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, discussion. Is this a temporary thing, Matt?
Yes, ma'am. Just to assist those residents of Harrison County who do not have internet access primarily.
Should we introduce it as our new directors?
Sure.
This is Matt Stratton, our new EOC director. Placing the big shoes of super lacy.
I'll do my best.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen, order person request to apply for Merrick Core seniors foster's grandparent program with a minimum federal funding level of two hundred and sixty thousand and required match of twenty-six thousand. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a lot of questions about this. Please. The first is, I don't understand why we need a foster grandparent program. What do they do?
I'm sorry.
What does this program do?
It provides, it's like, these are volunteers. It provides guidance for youth. And they serve as mentors for the youth. And this would be for forty seniors to be enrolled into the program. They're considered volunteers. They would be paid, I think, of three dollars an hour and work a minimum of twenty hours of volunteer.
Yeah, I get that. What I'm, what I'm trying to figure out, Mrs. Eunice, is how does that work? I mean, I understand sometimes they go rock the babies at the hospital, which of course they can't do now because of COVID. But how do you mentor? How would this specifically?
We would go into, work with, partner with the schools for students that they may be having difficulties with and service mentors for those rather than the one that you're talking about with the babies. And hope, the, the deadline is February third for submitting it. So, but maybe by the time it is approved, if we get approved, we would not, it would not be so challenging for COVID nineteen at that point.
Where's your twenty-six thousand dollar match coming from? I don't see that on here.
It would be coming from the county if the county approves, give us permission to apply. It's just a request because we, last year they did not open it up. They did not have a notice of funding opportunity for additional programs. But this year they do. So it's, it's left up to the board. You know, we already had two programs with this, with AmeriCorps. And this would be the third one. And if the board approves, you know, we will apply, but if not, we won't. We'll wait for another funding opportunity.
So you think this is, will be a benefit to the senior program?
I think, I think it would be and would, would kind of complement the other two that we had.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear you.
I'm sorry?
I couldn't hear you.
I said, I, I think it would complement the other two programs that we had. And I think it would benefit, because there are people, seniors out there who want to service as grandparents for, for the kids. And I just thought it would be just, like I said, last year they didn't open it up for us. There are six programs like this in the state of Mississippi, but there's not one in South Mississippi.
It says here twice, children with special needs, exceptional needs. I think at-risk children are the ones that really need a grandparent role model. Is this just written?
That's kind of the way they did it. We can, I looked at.
Because I'll tell you, no offense, but special needs, they don't really need, I mean, they're, they're covered in love. I mean, really, in my experience, it's the at-risk children that don't have the dads in the home and don't have the grandparents anything. I would like to see if this encompasses that.
Okay.
Because it says here twice, special needs, special needs, exceptional needs. That's not, in my opinion, what we really need.
And that's just kind of how AmeriCorps did it. It's the same thing when they first did the senior companion programs. They didn't have companions going in to make home visits. But we submitted an application to do that and it was approved. And we may not get it. This is just to, this is just to give us permission to apply. Because it's real competitive and we're competing with other people. I think we may, and we may not even be the only entity in South Mississippi that's, that's, that is going to apply. But it's, it's left up to the board, I'm sorry.
Basically, you don't have time to determine if you can incorporate the program that Supervisor Powell is talking about, twenty-nine, end of February, third deadline.
All I can do is.
They shouldn't get back to us because we'll meet after the third. When is that?
But this is just, what you're asking for right now is just to.
Approve it to apply. And if, and if Supervisor Powell wants me to note that at risk is one of our goals, I can do that.
And include it. I don't mean to leave special needs.
Right, I know, I understand, I understand. But we can always make that a priority in our application.
Okay, and we can always apply, receive it, and then not accept it. So I think it'd be best to let her apply anyway.
Okay.
Where I was going with this.
All right.
Go ahead and apply and then we'll come back to us if you.
Right, and I can always update you based on what, because I think April.
Do you deal with deadline?
Yes.
Yeah, these volunteers, are they grandparents or the children?
These are older, these are older people. These are seniors fifty-five years of age or older.
They'll get the three dollars.
They'll get the three dollars an hour stipend, yes.
Are they being in controlled environment?
Yes.
They'll be in a controlled environment so they won't be alone with anybody?
No, no, no. We even thought if we were still, depending on when they funded the year, they would let us know April is the deadline if we got, if we got approved, that we would even have them set up in settings kind of like we're going to do with, with the call center. Where we have the Plexiglas and so many, you know, of course, we did the six feet apart and all that. And, and we may even continue that even if we get some relief from not having to do it because you just never know. And it, for safety reasons. So we would have it set, set up similar to the call center that we're doing, than, dealing East Biloxi.
Sheriff, do you want to weigh in? Do you have any concerns or?
Not, not on this issue at all. I, I totally agree with what Rebecca said.
At risk. Okay.
Okay, so any further discussion?
Yeah, one more question. When you say controlled environment, you mean within the school, at boys and girls clubs, at head start? Would that would be ideal?
Within the school and we would piggyback on the call center in East Biloxi. Because it would already be set the way we want it to be, but definitely when they're meeting with the, with the students in the schools.
Ms. Eunice, the schools are aware of this, correct? The school system?
Yes.
No, Renee's shaking her head, no. The president of the school.
I know. Aware of the foster grandparent program? No, okay.
If the schools are aware of it and it's the environment that's in the school, then yeah.
Now, we have not made contact to partnership and all that. When I say they are aware of the program, because it's been around for years. So there are some, I think Jones County is the closest one for, for South Mississippi.
Yeah.
As far as from, but we haven't done anything because we had to get board approval to even apply. So there was no need of making contact to talk about partnerships with the school system until we get this board approval. Because it's just be a lot of time, right, to apply.
To apply only.
Right, to apply only, that's, right. Because they may tell us, no, they, you know, they, they're out of money, they, they can't. But we wanted to let them know if this boy was interested, that we were interested in applying. And there's no letter of intent. They, they used to ask for a letter of intent, but there's no letter of intent. You just literally have to go in and, and fill out your application and then they let you know whether or not you're in the running for, for the, the max is the two hundred and sixty thousand.
Got you.
Madam President, yes. One, one thing, could you call or contact the other people that have this going on and see how theirs is run?
I kind of off the record unofficially did that with Jones County.
Good. The more, the more we know about different, you know.
Right.
The more we open ourselves up to other people's experiences, the better we, the better product we'll have.
I talked to the director of the foster grandparent program in, in Jones County just to get a feel to see if I even wanted to get on the agenda to talk to you all about it.
You said that, that Jones County is the only program in South Mississippi?
In South Mississippi, the only foster grandparent. They have six in the state, but the closest one to us is Jones County.
Like the second largest county in the state don't have it.
Mm-hmm. I just, I just had.
And, and.
I love the idea.
Yeah, and she was very like.
So much to give to children.
Yeah, and that's what she, she was, the director in Jones County was saying to me that if, I hope your board is interested because it's a fantastic program.
Okay, with, just called a question. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen, consider expanding distribution of shelf-stable meals to the seniors, center participants who have not returned to the center since reopening August twenty-fourth at a cost of ninety thousand dollars. So you're going to do this, excuse me. The original request was for additional funds was for October one, twenty-twenty through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty. So do we have a motion to expand or extend? Is that wording correct?
I guess extend.
Okay, that's.
Because we're serving the same number of.
But you want to extend the time.
Right, the time, right. Because originally we thought some of the COVID nineteen challenges that we were facing, you know, in October, we're going to be null and void at this point. It's not because numbers are still increasing. And also, we were expecting to have more seniors back when we reopen on August twenty-fourth. And, and we're not because they are fearful. But hopefully, this will be the last time to extend because of the vaccinations. So if they can get those vaccinations, staff can get vaccinated, seniors can vaccinate, then maybe more people will return and we can put forth some more recruitment efforts to getting them back to the senior center.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, before you leave, a different subject. Across from the zoning and planning office on Community Road, we have people lined up, elderly people, like walkers coming from a half a mile away. Is there any way we can ask them to come to you? To, is there any way we can get our seniors the vaccine? Facilitate that so they can get back in our community centers?
Well, I had asked on the agenda, but it was taken off the agenda because Supervisor Martin had indicated that you are, we're going to do something different.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, discuss update on Harrison County Mississippi Unified Development Code study. Mr. Bonk.
So Unified Development Code is the combination of both the zoning ordinance and the land development regulations. And Jackie and I, along with Theresa in the current office, every Tuesday to go over issues that come up over time.
Didn't we hire somebody to do this?
They're doing the land, land.
The landscape plan?
Well, the landscape plan is underway and a land clearance ordinance. But that's a slice of.
Well, that's what I want, because we're paying them. I see invoices coming through, so that's, I really want to update on that. It's because I've seen nothing except checks that we're writing, but I haven't seen any kind of results.
The drafts.
Me either.
Yeah, nothing.
And it's been a year.
Been a minute.
Been a while.
So Jackie and I have submitted our comments to the original draft, so we're waiting for it.
Well, tell him to submit a draft, because it's been long enough. He should, he should have already done that. So we'll kind of look at it. Because we're paying it.
Yeah, and is he on the, I mean, if, we just paying, we're just paying for, should be just paying for the product, not for.
Yeah, this is a very narrow focus.
Why are we getting invoices if we're paying for the final product?
No, they're.
No, we're paying, it's a set amount for the product. But we're paying, I guess, a monthly.
Increases. Too much, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. Item twenty.
So.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So items twenty through twenty-four are the standard cases that were scheduled for today's agenda. And so if y'all are willing to tackle those at one time, we'd ask that you concur with the recommendations of the planning commission.
I have a problem, I may not have a problem, I need to take number.
We'll take them one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, so the first one is item twenty, order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one one HC one nine eight for an amendment to existing put to amend the master plan filed by Robert Neesele PE for shallow ground developments LLC. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I hope that you don't put the twenty-seven, I hope that it was sixteen, but that's my comment.
That was originally one hundred and forty-seven.
I know, you phoned that. That was too many, too.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one, order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two HC two one five for zone map amendment and conditional permit filed by Lynn Wood McGee and Andrea Davis requesting approval of change zoning class of a twenty point three acre parcel of land as shown on the site plan and described below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two, order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two HC two one six zone map amendment, conditional use permit filed by Daniel Jones?
No.
ETA requesting approval of change zoning district class of four point three acre parcel of land as shown on the site plan and described below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second discussion. What is exactly?
So these are two lots and there's already a house on one that they want to, instead of having two horizontal lots, they want to make them perpendicular. So a manufactured home would go on the inside and then the existing house on the other side. So they're just reorienting the same amount of land.
Y'all ever turned down a manufactured home, ever?
We do.
Your commission?
Yeah.
Last, last month we did.
A lady in our district, remember the elderly couple? They, they had to get their money back for their mobile phone. So y'all vetted this and you've been, there's not, it's not a housing, basically more housing than anything?
There's houses and manufactured homes in this area. It's a very old area. It's right across from, you know, where the subway is and the office supply store. I think the last name is Jones, Mr. Jones's commercial property. It's really attractive.
Is that right?
And this is a different Jones, so it's his property.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three, order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two HC two one eight, zone map amendment and conditional use permit filed by Melanie and Tommy Kraft as on file and listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four, order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two zero one two HC two one nine for zone map amendment, conditional use permit filed by Robert Schwartz for charter bank as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Pat, are they putting, this is a residential area, but they want to put a commercial bank in here?
No.
It's a bank only property, I'm sorry.
They own property. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-five, taking off the table, items twenty-seven, thirty-four, the January fourth, twenty-twenty-one meeting, Taken off the table, items twenty-seven, thirty-four, the January four, twenty twenty-one meeting. And concurring with the planning commission's decision to pre-case files as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What more things? Will you give us a refresher on that?
These are the regular cases that came last month. There was one case that an appeal was filed that is not included in this group. It was a text that I can't more recall that was.
Which was?
It was on holidays, it was on appeal time that was overlapping.
That's why we tabled them.
I remember that. I just didn't remember all the case files.
How does that work? The one that was appealed.
So it will be scheduled till as soon as the transcripts are ordered, that'll come in the future.
Okay. All right, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-six, order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one one H C one eight one. For filed by James and Sonia Robluski. Requesting approval of change zoning district classification as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-seven. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two H C two oh five. For zoning map amendment filed by Max Sander Lush. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-eight. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two H C two oh six for zoning amendment filed by Robert Collins. Robert Collins the third, junior, and Christopher Fairchild as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two H C two oh nine. For zoning map amendment and conditional use permit filed by Kevin Dossett as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two H C two one three. For zoning map amendment filed by Eddie Appel and Susan Heisey of G A H Properties as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two H C two one four. For zoning map amendment and conditional use permit filed by Jonathan D. Case for Jonathan M. Case. As listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-two. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one two H C two oh four for zoning map amendment. And conditional use permit filed by Herbert Cron and Ray and Linda Boy. It's listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Item thirty-three, personnel order approved in claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-four, order concurring with the county administrator on personnel changes as listed on file with Pay World Clerk and Personnel Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-five. Order spreading on the minutes, personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed on file with Pay World Clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-five, order spreading on the minutes, personnel changes. Still there?
Thirty-six.
Thank you. Awesome. Order spreading up on the minutes, the list of emergency low quotes, state contract orders issued by the purchasing department for the month of December twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-seven, let's recognize the sheriff, but tell us about his gifts to the Harrison County.
Six sixty-eight at the jail, sixty-six at the work center, seven fourteen total. Hundred thirteen females, ninety-six that cleared state arrest and forty-three federal inmates.
Thank you. Item thirty-eight. Order authorizing board president takes weekly reporting for Senate Bill three oh six five. Sheriff's funding for the law enforcement training academy for the quarter ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-nine. Order authorizing the board president takes weekly reporting for Senate Bill two thousand two. Sheriff's funding for law enforcement training academy for the quarter ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I only have one out of, there was no backup attached, so I'm assuming maybe you have it. All those in favor signify by aye.
Uh-uh.
All those opposed, motion carries. That was item thirty-nine. Item forty, order approving the payment of claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-one. Order approving the cell source purchase from Blue Light LLC, the amount of ten thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for the Blue Light Special. Longboard package.
Sounds like a plate lunch.
I know. Digital chalk notebook payable from oh oh one two oh oh nine two two and authorizing a voucher amendment for funds received. From Alley Telecom Group on March ninth, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion. Is this for I T A S M or?
Yes.
Okay.
The Blue Light Special. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, it's not it, I didn't understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, unless you're giving out Blue Light. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-two, order approving the purchase of twenty-seven Armor Express Razor Level. Two bulletproof vests and nine Armor Express overt carrier system from Mississippi Police Supply. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-three, order approving the purchase from one sh- of one Chevrolet Silverado fifteen hundred S S V from state contract. At the cost of thirty thousand one hundred and two dollars payable from the sheriff's forfeiture account. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Second. Any discussion? Rebecca, that's why I asked about putting, I'll try to get this stuff more organized for each time.
So we can save each other.
So you don't know what to pull. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-four. Order acknowledging receipt of approving and spreading on the minutes, the M O U. Of from the Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration. Regarding updated mileage reimbursement rate, Baker Jengree one twenty twenty, excuse me, it's a memorandum, not a memorandum. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-five. Order approving mileage reimbursement for in-county travel for the following employees. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-six, resolution on Harrison County Board of Supervisors for adoption of the Harrison County Board of Supervisors Cafeteria Plan for twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven. Order accepting the proposal of Pilz Williams LaRosa and Company to conduct audits for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. As being the best based on qualification experience and prices recommended by the county comptroller and administrator. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion. Well, they, um, I guess this goes to the comptroller. There's the five hundred thousand, the half a million dollars that's in a bank. Uh, from tax collection that nobody knows where it came from or who it belongs to.
Be unclassified or unclaimed fund.
Yeah, well, they be looking at that, so we can find out.
They look at all the cash accounts, um, and the reconciliations that go with it, so I'm assuming yes. But we can specifically request that they look at something, um, in detail.
I like it.
It's my understanding that that account goes back from the, maybe early to mid nineties. So I'm not exactly sure what kind of documentation is gonna be available to support all of those claims going back to that time period.
Is there a timeframe when that should be deposited in the general fund if you had, with an explanation?
Um, yes, usually that money is turned over as unclaimed funds and then what we do is if it cannot be identified, it's sent up to the state treasurer's office as unclaimed.
I thought they were pre-called for and I just couldn't, uh, uh, that's a lot of money.
With, with the sheer volume of transactions that the tax collectors office does, I'm not sure that they have anybody that was dedicated to really reviewing those, um. Bank reconciliations and outstanding checks.
This one's good to do it per year as opposed to her.
Well, yes.
Twenty-five, thirty years.
There's a lot of checks, especially with large amounts, they should really investigate it and make sure they can contact the people and find out why the check has.
Would the board need to make policy about that or is there policy?
We can make a policy all day long, but, you know, you can't control somebody to deposit a check. And, and sometimes, you know, these checks are made out to title companies. And if they don't have the information, which they should, I mean, they should have it on the title, but, um. When you look at some of these old outstanding checks, a lot of them are to the title companies and they just haven't identified it if they're paying several times.
It's just oversight, I'm sure, but that's something I think we can correct. Hopefully, yeah.
And I'm still the good, if, if it's not returned, do we go into our general fund? Why would we go to the state? John McAdams called me about it and said, do we go to our general fund?
Well, if it's a valid claim, sometimes it does go to our general fund, but when we review, for example, things that are in our depository or payroll clearing account. If it's outstanding for, I believe, five years, we have to submit that as unclaimed fund because it's a valid claim. And a lot of times, you know, it's either sent to the wrong address, the person has moved and the database hasn't been updated. So that's just state statute.
But was the treasurer, oh, that's statute, okay.
And then there's several bank accounts. There's not just one with the half a million dollars.
It's seven.
For the tax collector?
Yeah, that's.
Um, there are different accounts based on whether it's a credit card clearing account, a dispersment account, um. Or the fees that they get from the internet and then they also have them at different locations to, to properly identify where the funds are coming from. I'm not sure about the unclaimed. It was my understanding that was just one bank account when they were consolidating, closing out the former tax collector's accounts. I just, it's, it's something I think we probably need to straighten out.
It's one of those things that made a problem for everybody because it, well, these funds, well, for the most part, these funds belong to people. Who just didn't cash a check, they got a refund and they got some check that they cashed. Legally has to be done, that's, that's an unclaimed fund and it's supposed to be turned over to the state, I guess, every five years. You know, and then they, you know, you call me and I, my dad had one where you have to get all state papers and all kinds of stuff to get it. So we just spent some effort, two thousand forty-nine. So, I mean, that's the problem. We're not, it's not fun to the county. It's lost or something else. Random.
Okay.
Now, part of it could be, it depends on what the check was for. Some of it could.
Well, also, uh, that last list that I got when Glenn Prin, Glenn Pitt had Secretary of State's and listed Harrison County. In several places.
Yes, ma'am.
As unclaimed funds, so I wanted to make sure that you follow up with that, because some of them pretty big checks.
The chancellor and I have been in discussion with that and he has someone that is reviewing that to figure out, we've got to get the details of what those claims are. There were several from tax collector, circuit clerk, justice court. He said we have to make a determination of exactly what that is.
Okay, because I know.
Thank you. I wish it was.
Did we vote on that, so?
Motion, second.
We have, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item forty-eight, order acknowledging receipt of Secretary of State CARES Act reimbursement in the amount of nine thousand six thirty-five thirty-two. For temporary election poll workers positive into the general fund, oh oh one oh 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 three four zero. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-nine, order authorizing the reimbursement to the circuit clerk for temporary workers paid. During the November twenty twenty elections payable from the Secretary of State CARES Act reimbursement in the same amount. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion. Um, the Election Commission is just about, I mean, they have, they're way over budget. And, and if you looked at the review of it, um, do they have the money to do that or we, do we pay this?
Just the CARES Act is paying us and we're paying the circuit clerk.
This is, uh, money that the circuit clerk was awarded for the temporary workers, so the money came to the county. We had to cut it back into the circuit clerk because those workers were paid out of our fee journal. Um, and unfortunately, I think it's just the timing when the elections were in the budget year that the elections budget is over.
Okay, it, will this help, help it? Oh, I'm sorry.
But as far as the Election Commission, there wasn't a separate CARES Act grant that is offsetting that, so those should be changed also. They should be increased.
Okay, because they were like ninety-eight percent over or something. I mean, they were way ahead of their.
Yeah, they, they received some grant fundings for, uh, for those elections.
For the extra pay. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Order authorizing the reimbursement to the circuit clerk for temporary workers paid. Don't do that, I'm sorry. Item fifty, order approving payment of claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-one, order approving continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency within Harrison County due to the spread of COVID nineteen as adopted on March fifteenth, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two, order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. On tax parcel number oh eight one one L oh one oh three one oh oh five for twenty eighteen. Erroneous and thus void appinicio and for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
This property belonged to the city of, well, it was, it had a lease on it that had expired, so if it wasn't assessed, okay, if the lease expired. It's not, if we're qualified to be, such that it's being erroneous.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three, order adjudicating the tax sales of Office twenty-sixth and Office thirtieth. On tax parcel oh five oh six sixteen, zero zero four zero zero one for twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen taxes. Erroneous and thus void appinicio and for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion?
Harrison County School District property wasn't the, the wrongest list though.
It was not erroneous.
It was a wrong list, we have to, it's a.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-four, order approving the request of the City of Gov. Board Department of Leisure Services to advertise and set up a buffer zone on the beach area. From Fifteenth Street to Twentieth Avenue as a viewing area only for the July fourth fireworks. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Order, excuse me, item fifty-five. Order approving the waiver of rental fees and deposits for the use of the Apple Civic Center by the City of Deipil. To hold municipal elections on April the fifth, thirty-seventh, April twenty-sixth, twenty-eighth, and June seventh through ninth. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six. Order authorizing the board president to execute the Mississippi Development Authority Community Services Division of Economic Development Jobs Report. For deal three four nine for the Mississippi Gov. Coast Community College Nursing School and Simulation Complex. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Are we responsible for their job? They got the grant, but the county is responsible for.
I think they're using us as a conduit. I don't think we're responsible. Would it, are we, Tim?
I don't think we're responsible. I think there is some, um, reporting requirement with those grants out there.
Cause they didn't make their job requirement, if you look at that backup, so I just want to make sure we're not all under this.
Well, county grant was for building of the road, so the roads are gonna be there regardless. And we're not, we have to pay it back, but that's common that they don't need it and that gets extended. And it's unusual. I keep looking at the backup and I didn't see this one work out, so I don't know what to say. Generally, it's just for, for, without the job.
Right.
It's a long way from being such a fault. I know that, but we're.
Cause they were supposed to, I think they only have about a quarter of the job that they said they were gonna get when they built this place.
Right.
Pam, can you check on that for us?
I will. Um, they have the extension to be able to reschedule, so they're working within that extension, but we'll have to find out when they anticipate reaching that goal. About how long the college, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, order extend, or discuss extending contract for lobbying service to the Capital Group Alliance in Harrison County for a period of one year. And authorizing the execution thereof. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight, before I leave there, you all need to let me know if there's any particular item you would like this group to address in the upcoming session. I know mental health is on the top of the list. They have stated hire of mental health liaison. We have not met this person yet, but they apparently are on board. So our capital group is open to maybe try to get, we need to set up or at least.
Could we meet with Capital Group so we can talk specifically about our, instead of just writing in the house?
Absolutely.
Okay. And check they, I don't know what all they've come up with, but.
They've got two or three things. It was and.
Fire. Real fire trucks.
I didn't have any with me, so I apologize. But, but Ms. Rebecca, I'll set that up. Just gonna come to a meeting. Okay, I think we voted. Item fifty-eight, discuss employee-related COVID absences and update with EOC for COVID-related supplies. Do we have a motion?
Motion second.
Discussion.
Discussion, Pam, update.
Actually, I don't, no, I'll put that on there. But I don't see Matt. Did he leave? Matt, our EOC guy. Because I want to be sure he's gearing up with this second wave that's coming. We need to make sure we've got our supplies and our stuff ready to go.
We have been ordering some more supplies recently. We've ordered some more uh thermometers because I think a lot of those are working as well with the temperatures, you know, and then the basic supplies, the hand sanitizer, face masks, the general supplies. We have been starting to back up on that, but I don't know what all they've ordered yet.
I know we ran out here, so.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, we need to make sure he's on top of this because I know he's new. But the second wave is going to, we're going to go through that.
And, and you know, the administrative leave that eighty hours has, that has expired. So anyone that is out for COVID-related, either for testing or for positive or for a spouse or a family member, then they have to use their sickly or their personally, whichever they have, so it's up to them, but um.
So that's.
Documenting all that too.
That's, see, that is what the problem is, is that expired, but here we are with this whole new, it's worse now than it was. So what do we need to do to try and work on getting that extended? So that our employees don't have to use their leave? Or is there anything?
Congress is, they're only, um, it's coming from Congress, that's a federal office that you would have to contact, talk to Congress.
Okay, so that's one of the projects we're going to give Capitol.
No, you can't give them.
Are we having a lot of absences now, Pam, or have you seen a spike in that?
We did when we first came back, um, we were about, you know, there were some negatives and about even, probably the number of negatives and positives. But last week I didn't get that maybe one or two. So um, I don't know if it's, but I'm sure it's probably going to be coming back up, but that's all for right now. Unless they're not sending us the information, if they're going to another agency other than medical analysis, because they send, medical analysis sends us reports. So um, if they're going to Memorial or any other walk-in cleaning type thing, they have to provide it, you know, to be able to receive their leave time or their time off. But I haven't seen, they, you know, they, they haven't reported it to us.
We're expecting Ashley Comstock from Memorial Hospital to discuss the rollout of vaccination, but they had a staff meeting, she's supposed to be here anytime, so maybe we might keep that out for. We'll get her on Phil's end.
Yeah. I have a little tiny question. Pam, if somebody called me and said they have masks and all this PPE and they want to apply for the county, are we bidding it out? Do they just reach out to Jody or do we just buy it from?
No, we just have to get quotes. We just receive quotes.
We receive quotes.
Yeah, anything over five thousand, we have to have second quote.
So just tell them to reach out to you or Jody?
Either me or Jody or, or Matt, either one of us.
Matt's kind of.
Hey, would that man limit it to send those to us?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
What'd you ask?
They'd sent some stuff in the beginning, but now I think we just buy it and then we hope they'll reverse it.
Yeah, me must send a face mask. So at the beginning, we haven't received it out of where I have to see them.
Thank you. Just in time, Ashley.
Just got the words out, my man.
Just in time.
So would you mind coming up? Get a minute here. I'll tell you what, let me finish this. Let me do this last agenda item and then we'll have you. Uh, let's discuss the Mardi Gras holiday. As you know, we not really have a Mardi Gras, so I didn't know if we wanted just to stick to the Mardi Gras holiday or maybe replace it with President's Day. What do y'all, what's your feelings? Would that complicate matters?
Well, it has to be an order from the governor, doesn't it?
No.
No, this is a county, this is local.
Okay.
You know, we gave up President's Day for Mardi Gras. Since we're not doing Mardi Gras, we might want to look at, President's Day's in February, isn't it?
It's the big.
But it would give you, but it would give the employees a longer, a three-day weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
So what do y'all think? Employees might want to.
The Monday.
Monday.
Take the Monday for President's Day and have a three-day weekend. I'm telling you, y'all, y'all cool with that? As opposed to Tuesday, Mardi Gras day? It's the day before, so they will have to work Mardi Gras, but you can take Monday.
The only issue I want to have with, which I'm, I'm fine with that on, sometime on Mardi Gras, when the schools are out, then that's like a baby's thing that Pam.
That's a great point.
Oh, that's right.
Our, our schools, yes, having that holiday.
Probably going to be talking about that Tuesday.
Yeah. Because they usually get two days, they, uh, the schools normally get the Monday and Tuesday anywhere. So, and originally, it gets, we, you know, the governor's holiday, state holiday is President's Day. We are allowed one holiday that we can switch out and that's the one that we always switch to.
You have an hour to work after?
Yeah, that's a good point about schools, because if schools are out and parents have to work, that's, makes it harder.
Well, they're out Monday and Tuesday for school, but you still have the same issue either way.
Yeah, because they would have to work Monday. Okay, so what's the board's pleasure? Take the Monday instead of the Mardi Gras or what?
How many employees are we having here?
All right, let's show our hands over to employees, I know that y'all want Monday off.
They're probably sending their off.
I may watch Tuesday off. Monday is. So we have a motion to swap the Mardi Gras holiday.
You already ruled.
To the President's Day, which is the Monday before. Can I have that motion? Can I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Ashley Comstock, would you please come up and introduce yourself? She is the new Business Development Director with Memorial Hospital and just kind of give us a rundown on what you're doing and what you're looking for and what we can do to help.
Thank you. Well, as partners, I'm here to say thank you for hiring me. So my new role as Business Development is just that. It's to be in the community, to be aware of everything that's going on, how Memorial can partner with anyone. Um, I met with the Director of the Harrison County Development Commission and I said, when you're trying to entice businesses to come here, please promote our healthcare system because that's one of the things that you don't often think about. You know, people say, well, what are the utility costs and what are the taxes? But also, you know, when you're speaking to a CEO, does their wife have cancer and they need a great oncologist? And is that a determining factor for them to move their industry here? So keep us in mind, keep me in mind, when you're hearing of people looking to come here in different businesses and industries or existing ones who need help with their employees. We do more than just physicals and vaccines. So, you know, we can help go in and assess any kind of risk or potential harm that could come health, health-wise to their businesses and their employees. And just anything you all need, of course, from Memorial Hospital, uh, please let me know. We have a great team. With me today is my boss, Chase Pierce. Chase is the Vice President of Regional and Systems Development, so I report directly to him. Don't you just love, thank, just pray for him.
So let's talk about the vaccine.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Yes.
Can you give us an update on when the county employees will get it or Republican general?
Yes, we do not know.
The people under seventy-five?
Right. So the next tier will, tier will be uh first responders and teachers, and that begins on Monday. So we have to follow strict orders from the Health Department. Dr. Dobbs sets this for us. Right now, we have been tasked with making sure that all of our frontline healthcare workers have been vaccinated, which we have also extended to AMR because we consider them a provider. Uh, and they are, we are going to their, Ms. Connie called me about this to make sure, she was looking out for them. To make sure that they get what they need. We are going to their facility tomorrow. We've also invited a fire department EMTs, not just firefighters. They have, they have to be an EMT because that's the rule right now, it has to be a healthcare frontline worker. We have also vaccinated over two thousand people in two days, seventy-five years of age and older. We had a blowout two days and did everything we possibly could to get them out as swiftly as possible. Uh, the first day, there was a couple of glitches with cold and being outside, but we got ahold of that quickly. And the next day, the Diablo Community Center was wonderful and they have been so appreciative because they're so scared. Um, and so just that for them was wonderful. And so, um, beginning on Monday, we are opening up to law enforcement. I've spoken to Sheriff Peterson and we're going to the jail uh facility to make sure that their workers get it. Um, I've spoken with all of the cities and schools. Um, I'm working with Laura Gill and all of the city school superintendents to schedule us to come on-site for their schools so that their teachers don't have to leave campus. And so that is what we're working through right now. I am in the process of like speaking to you all, asking cities and other, you know, counties and things of that nature that aren't, they'll fall under those guidelines, to get their numbers together of who in your organization wants to be vaccinated so that we can make sure that when we're requesting these vaccines, that we get ample supply to cover everyone. I do not know when they're going to open it up for us to go further than what we are right now.
We have a tremendous amount of exposure. It's circuits, uh, tax collector.
Supervisors.
Uh, and we're first responders, you know, and. And I'm not trying to be selfish, but at the same time, our employees are exposed to a tremendous amount of people, especially now during tax season. Uh, we've had to close this office and, and our, the tax collector closed her office over there because of the COVID, so.
Well, they're good, they're clear for about three months. No, but I understand, so if, if anyone that is deemed a first responder, I had a city ask me, our public works people are written down as first responders, well, then they can come.
But we've got a list. We call them essential personnel, there's pretty much the same thing.
Okay.
Isn't that what we would call first responders?
Chase, chime in here on anything.
Yeah, the, the State Department of Health, they have their own definition of first responders as well. And if the counties have um a, a section in their, whatever their bylaws, whatever, then um they can be counted in that. So if, if you say essential, that's essentially what you're saying right now. It does need to state first responder in that, or it needs to match the definition of Mississippi Clark and Film.
Because, see, understand, because of our hurricane and disaster risks that we have developed, this list was way before my time, but it's clearly defined who are those first responders.
Yeah, if, if you have that clearly, clearly defined as first responders.
Pam, would you mind?
Hundred percent.
It would, um, it would be the departments or the individuals that are classified to work in the EOC for after a disaster.
Correct.
It could be, um, you know, from fired law enforcement.
Some of them may already be on your list.
Their role is in the EOC during disaster or emergency situations that they're trained for.
So they're all trained.
Believe me, we want to give it to as many people as we can and we only get a certain amount of allotment, so.
The point about the ones that are not first responders, but are, are exposed to so many people, like chan, chancellor clerks, for instance, or.
I know, I just had a call about funeral homes.
Yeah, we're going to talk, let's start with this list to give us somewhere to start. And that'll fall into this category. And then a week later, from what I, what Mr. Nico told me on text messages all day Saturday, is that uh it's probably going to be sometime the week of the eighteenth, sometime that week, that they'll roll out for the next phase of people, which will be the under seventy-five to sixty-year-olds. Anyway, it's going to stage it from there.
Trying to reach the most vulnerable.
Yeah. But we also agreed on Saturday that I would present to this board the idea of allowing them to use the Mississippi Coast Coliseum as a vaccination site.
We were going to do that once, the full.
We were, yeah, it's not a new idea, but. Matt has, was on this string of text messages with me. And the two CEOs, it wasn't just Memorial, it was both hospitals, myself, Matt, Mayor Hughes, and apparently the governor's on board with it from the texts I got from him or relayed from him. So I just want to be sure that y'all are okay with that. We don't know when it'll be, but it'll be a way to get these people, they'll be inside, but the employees as well as the public, they can handle a lot of volumes. But from what I understand, it really just depends on how much of the vaccine they get, yeah.
Even when we're giving it, you know, at the Diablo Community Center, I'm out there every fifteen minutes counting heads because I don't want anyone waiting that isn't going to get it. We know exactly how many we, we have unfrozen, thawed out, frozen, everything, you know. So, and we don't want to waste a single one. So once you, you know, once you thaw them out, you have about twelve hours where it has to be used. So we are very strategical.
Does what, about six or seven people?
Vial does ten people.
Ten people.
That's right. So once you open it up, once you, once you open that first vial, you have ten shots in there. And if, we want to give all ten, so we need to know exactly, we don't want to open it up and then have to waste nine. So once you open it up, you only have like three hours to use that vial.
This is just a thought, Ashley, but instead of bringing all the vulnerable, vulnerable into one place, can we just do drive-through like we've done in the past? Would that be safer for elderly people especially?
Our team. Our team is working on that. This is the problem, when you have someone sitting in a car and they're in anaphylactic shock. You may not stand out.
You have, you have to wait fifteen minutes after you get the shot, right? And then a lot of places, what they're doing is telling you to park here and if you have an issue, honk the horn. Think about that for me. If you're having an issue and you pass out, how are you going to honk the horn?
Yeah.
Right, so it doesn't make sense to us.
Yeah.
And we did talk about, you have to park in the garage there, so we need some work covered. What if it's like this, to, you know, they want to get vaccines? That's not good for our workers to be out.
But that column Sam's pretty big, man.
Yeah.
So we need something to drive through that's.
And McDonald is the best at organizing flows.
I have a question. Dealing with the vulnerable, I don't know if any have been in Gulfport yet, but seventy-five or older, any test, any vaccine?
It was, we were, we were on Community Road in, in Gulfport on Thursday.
Okay. Is there, could it be a consideration of taking those to like senior centers? In the county, we got what, five or six or seven?
Yeah.
We can, we can, we've talked about the.
Neighborhoods, like easier. My mom didn't go to Biloxi or, she didn't think about driving the road. She's Asian. So she said, well, maybe come to Gulfport sometime. So my point is, everyone can identify to those senior center complexes, because that's what they do, that's what they pass by every day. I think, why not try to do it out like that?
And you mentioned Community Road, that's exactly what I mentioned earlier to y'all. People were calling saying elderly ladies were literally on their walkers going down Community Road, parking almost a half mile away. So I, I, I suggest to you citizens centers as well.
We did not expect the turnout that we got.
Right.
Um, we were very overwhelmed. You know, you hear all these people saying, I'm not getting that shot, I'm not getting that. And then we run it up, they're like, I want that shot! You know, and so we were a little overwhelmed and we tried to accommodate as much as we could. I mean, we were pulling staff out of the hospital like crazy and doing, and you know, I have a little grandmother, the thought of something, you know, of her out there like that, I, we are very.
We, we, we want to go to the citizens versus them having to come. And we like that idea, that's not always what we've, what we've kind of thought. The problem with that is the resources now. When we have these vials, they come in packs of ten vials, right? So there's a hundred doses in there. And once you take them out of the refrigerator, you have to give them that day. And then after that, there's registration boards, you have to go put into the mix system and to, so the state knows that you gave these. So there's all this paperwork.
And that has to be done within some hours.
I mean, there's just a lot behind the scenes to keep the vaccines going appropriately for the state. Uh, so we try not to just throw it. So we try not to just throw it out there. That's why we don't do it to all the clinics right now. We try to get it to fifty clinics. It's just the logistics of it is very hard. Now, it's not like a normal flu vaccine. There's a lot more paperwork behind it. I like the idea of the senior centers. I think that's.
But that's really where y'all, the Diablo Senior Center and the Diablo Community Center, which is where you're currently doing this, join parking lots.
Yes.
So if you have an overflow or problem with that, access to the senior center, which like I said, is in the same parking lot, there's chairs and tables.
Yeah, I know that there's a lot of others, citizens that are seventy-five and older that need the vaccines still. I've gotten.
We have a community center in Wool Market as well, right attached to the senior center, so.
But we have.
We have ample land.
We wanna work with y'all because we wanna get our citizens safe. The more, sooner we get these vaccines rolling, hopefully the better we can all get back to normal.
I can, I can report this, that Harrison County has given the second most vaccines in the state as of.
That's good to know.
Hear that, Ms. Connie?
Do you hear that? Harrison County.
Has given the second most vaccines of any county in the state.
Who gave the most?
Uh, Ringo County in Jackson.
Of course.
It probably just, if we had more, we would've given more.
I was on the phone with Representative Barnes from the hospital to hear, and she and I were talking about what you're talking about and coming into your community, so.
All communities.
All communities, yes, definitely. But she was saying, you know, like you, she didn't think there was a Gulfport.
So I would, what I would like to say is that we want to work with y'all on the locations. That's the one thing that's important to us, as we start going through this, work with Harrison County to find the best locations. But also, we wanted to report to y'all that we are out of vaccines right now. They, we have less than two hundred right now, and those were all allocated to what Ashley said just a little while ago, which is AMR and to, what was it, Ashley, the other?
I'm sorry?
First responders.
First responders.
The first, yes. So those are allocated. We do not know when we'll get our next shipment of vaccines. Hopefully, hopefully it'll be Wednesday. But it's literally what how the state operates is, we're sending them now, and we're sending X amount. That's why you saw last week, when they announced on Wednesday that we can start getting them to seventy-five and older. And they said, we're sending this many, literally on Wednesday afternoon. And we developed a plan in three hours to get it straight to the, to the public.
Which was much better than the State Department of Health, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Since they're craft.
I think they, they were here to twenty-one a day, something like that. Twenty-one. So I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, sir. It's gonna fall back on y'all.
Exactly right.
To carry this, because this is outside their realm of expertise, in my opinion. And I would rather have a nurse give me a shot. I love me some National Guards, but.
They're bad.
I don't know about all of that.
They're a little rough.
Yeah. Okay, is anything else we need, baby, or?
No, ma'am, y'all just let me know what you need and.
Congratulations on your joining the team.
Thank you.
Good hire, by the way.
You know that you are, but you're adults when somebody like Ashley walks in, they went to school with one of your daughters.
She has lumber parties at Ms. Connie's.
That's right.
So yes, I'm thrilled to have this position. It was unexpected. It was a great offer. It's a great partnership. And I've, you know, worked with you all through the years and I'm happy to continue that service. So thank you. Thank you for having us today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll have to hit the rest of those bags. Okay, Supervisor Jones, do you have anything?
Uh, don't have any.
Oh, well, I'll skip myself. And Tim, do you have anything?
I have a couple matters. Last week, we rescheduled a advertisement for the TILA, as you'll recall. We went ahead just so the record is complete, prepared an order rescinding the previous order that had the mistake in it. Having an order rescinding approval of agenda item number fifteen, number twenty-two, two-two-three-six, related to the tax increment finance plan for the Broadwater Reef Development Project is adopted on issue fourteen, two thousand and twenty. That way you won't have that order sitting there.
So, do we have a segment? All those in favor, signify by aye. Those motion carries.
Next is, be ready by the next one. The trailer that the board declared to be, last week, we had a gentleman made an offer to move rid of no cultural county that the board was with. I don't know, order adjudicating approved the declaration of a modified building unit, serial number one-six-five-E-eight-three-zero-zero, located Maple Drive campus as surplus and authorized as supposed to, should to, listen to. Let's just complete.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. Motion carries.
Lastly, the concessions contract has expired for the recreational facilities. I was advised the board wanted to consider extending that. The gentleman owes the county twenty-seven hundred dollars from the previous concession contract, but he purchased some computer programming and some other items that he will give to the county.
I have a question. He worked for a long period of time and went to several different. I mean, so I can't believe he only owes twenty-seven dollars.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven hundred because, I mean.
He provided an itemized list.
But that, that was his, that was the money for doing business. It wasn't, it wasn't in the contract. He has a contract that he pays. Ten, no, twenty-seven percent of gross sales. So the first day that he started the contract, which was when, what month?
A year ago.
A year.
Ever tip, the concessions have been closed?
They've been closed for COVID, but they were open for eight months the year before.
No, no. The contract did commence in June, but that contract of nineteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Two thousand and nineteen.
For county farm roof only. County, the soccer fields did not open, the soccer season, or whatever you wanna call it, it's my understanding, did not commence until November of nineteen.
But he went to all practices, et cetera.
How do you know that?
Because I talked to the guy who, the public, I mean, the, I talked to Parks and Rec guy.
Well, I think we need to, then I think we need to get our concession guy in here and ask him.
Yeah.
And, and also Parks and Rec.
So I'll make a motion to. Get him in here our next meeting before we make a decision.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I request the board permission to ask him to provide us what he reported for sales tax? Is this the way we look at it?
Did you also ask him how many events that he went to?
But also, we're gonna ask.
That's what.
Sales tax will tell us exactly what he reported to the state. You hope he reported correctly. So we're gonna hold this until we find out.
Correct.
One last item, I was asked to discuss about a piece of property that was on the industrial Seaway Road. The county wanted to build, consider buildings, buildings there for the county purposes.
Code engineering.
Code engineering.
If the board wants to do that, then we need to make the request for the development commission to consider that. And they don't really have choice if the board says.
Yeah, I'd like to get a motion for that because they're selling the properties and every time Jackie identifies one, they turn around and sell it. So could I get a motion that.
Motion.
Take care of that. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
So you want us to make the request till we get a discussion?
Yes.
That's all I have. Let's court, let's, the court, let's the board. Let's the board want any updated status and litigation.
Powers, do you have anything?
I just have one thing. I've been working with Pat Bunk and Jackie, talking about, you know, ways to protect our roads from developments that build and then mess up our roads, then we have millions of dollars flushed down the toilet repairing all of their mess after they're long gone. Pat said that unfortunately, a lot of us are on different pages. So I keep meeting with them and they say, but this one thinks that, or this one thinks that. Can we put a workshop together? All of us, where we decide, do we need a construction entrance? Should there be a retaining pond? Like all these things that they need one type of direction instead of from all of us.
And that's where I was going next.
Okay, good. I thought it'd be on the agenda. I didn't see it, so.
I did talk to Supervisor Ladner, and he suggested, which is why I asked about that study that was on the agenda. All of that is supposed to be addressed in some way through that study that we never laid eyes on. According to Supervisor Ladner. So he, I was hoping he'd be here today, but that's why, to discuss the study was on there. You know, you heard Pat say, what I specifically asked him about was little pieces. But this study is supposed to look at this whole big picture.
Is that, is that right, Jackie? We were.
From what I understand.
One road, I know, for sure.
So, well, we, that's a different study. The one that he is working on now was the one that we discussed during the budget hearings when we said we would do something quick to get some land development ordinances moving forward. And then we also talked about budgeting a year-long process to get submitted regs updated.
Well, where are, I haven't seen anything.
Well, they haven't needed the three code, engineering and.
I know, but they haven't told up this board.
We need to get you there.
He doesn't know, I don't know, Marlon doesn't know, so they need, y'all need to come back and tell us what's going on.
Yes, I don't like that.
Before you do anything, because this board has to bless it. And like Ms. Powers said, we're not all on the same page with this.
Right, right.
So, but I get phone calls, some good, most of them not so good, but you know, I don't like not knowing.
Yes, I'll, I'll make sure that you get where we are with.
So yeah, like your, would that be legal for us to hold a workshop?
Sure.
It'd still be public.
It's certainly a public meeting, if you're more, majority of the board is, just so the board knows, there is a method to enforce, for instance, construction entrances. Do that through your local ordinance, so it's leading with use of the roadways. If you post a sign saying no trucks, and somebody takes a truck over it, or you put weight limits on it, then they can be fined for doing that. Now, you have to have a mechanism for enforcing it.
That's what I'm saying.
That's because, yeah.
Sheriff's gonna go sit out there and watch.
No, we have to get a scale.
You know, zoning, anybody, actually, any citizen has a right to charge somebody with a crime, so.
Yeah, but that's not realistic.
Well, no, once, we did it in a sudden, one sudden day, we were having a problem, and I don't remember where it was. Where we put up signs and we actually, you know, we just warned them, if you come down this road again, one of those, they had a construction entrance. It just was, you have to go all the way around.
They talk about Savoy and Fifty-Third, because they were sending me videos at seven o'clock on a Saturday morning, literally of massive trucks coming in front of their tiny little houses. And who's gonna enforce it?
Well, the problem is that sometimes the citizens have to enforce it because we're not there. We don't, you know, when people commit misdemeanors, either law enforcement officer has to observe it, or somebody has to file a charge to enforce it. Once you put the word out that it's gonna be enforced, they'll stop. That's the problem.
No, you'd be amazed.
It's just like a.
You'd be amazed.
You go out on I-ten on that, with speed limit seventy, but there ain't going seventy anywhere out there.
We even called the company, the building company that was dropping off massive pieces of wood. And they were like, I don't know, we told our driver not to.
Right.
And then we stopped the driver, oh, I don't know, this is what's set on the sheet. I mean, that's not a reasonable, realistic way. It's got to be in stone, and the developers have to know, day one, that we want construction entrance. For, if that's what we choose.
Yeah, still have to enforce it either way. Have to come up with a method.
Right, so I'm like, I'm like.
Okay, so I think we've beat this horse. So we're gonna have a workshop at a date to be determined to discuss who's invited to the workshop.
The board, engineering code, and planning.
Okay.
And planning commissioners, if they, right?
They want to.
They want to, yeah.
Just keep in mind when you think about it, you gotta come up with a method of enforcing whatever you're talking.
That's my.
That's the art.
So we're gonna throw it out there, you know, upset all these people. You're gonna get all these developers upset, and then we're not gonna be able to enforce it anyway, so.
They, they won't be upset. They're upset by change. We have the same problem with legal, so they'll change a rule and people go crazy. Then when you get to abide by the rules, not a problem. If they don't enforce rules, and then you suddenly say, we're gonna enforce them, they get upset. But ultimately, once they realize the rule is not that bad of a problem.
Well, I don't know what developers know, because that's not the ones that I've been getting phone calls from.
I know. I mean, I understand that.
Tim.
I think Jack and I have been out on the road a couple times, and we get people complaining.
The issue is like stormwater runoff, if we don't manage our land properly, then stormwater, you, if we do it properly, it will save, it will save six dollars for every one dollar that we spend. And going back into that subdivision, redoing everything, camera and the, not, no silt dances, all those things. So it's very important because it would save us and the taxpayer money. Now, I'm not so sure.
Well, let's say that. Let's say that for the workshop.
It may cost the developer a little bit, and that's why they're fighting.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Ms. Rocko, Nash, your turn. Anything else?
No.
Anything else? And Ter, Pam, you got anything?
Um, I wanted to remind y'all that we need an appointment for the Region Twelve Mental Health.
Oh, yeah, um, sorry, did Marlon call you all about that, or anybody?
Yes, he did. And he had suggested Leonard Capania. Who, I don't know if he's talked to Mr. Capania though.
Yeah, he's.
He has, and Leonard okay with that, serving?
Yep.
You know, his background, he's been really involved with the mental health all these years.
Right, and homeless now.
So then I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Capania.
One issue, I'm sorry, we didn't discuss.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
What's it now? Issue that, if you were someone to look into in terms of the conflict? He, he does some work, or work for OSHA.
Right.
But OSHA does not co, OSHA does not contract with Region Pine Belt. He would be on the Pine Belt Commission.
So you think it'd be okay?
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem. You know, if he, if something does come up where OSHA's doing something, he probably would accuse himself.
Oh, OSHA's, OSHA, I thought you said OSHA.
He's a, he's a police liaison between OSHA and police. And so, you know, I looked at it, he would be appointed to the Pine Belt Commission.
Yeah.
Not, OSHA's has, has had some interaction with Harrison County, but that's not the Pine Belt, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Me?
Yeah, one other thing is, I sent you some information that we received Friday morning, I guess, or Thursday night, Friday morning, on COVID-nineteen rental assistance program that we can apply for. The application is due tomorrow. It's just intent that we would do it, and then we can decide how we would run it, or if we'd contract that out.
What's it? I don't get.
On the rental.
Who would get the rental assistance?
The ones that are, been unemployed, lost their jobs, any kind of effect during the COVID situation.
What about the owner of the, of the property?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. But I don't understand why the county would apply for something like that.
We, where they only, there's only two counties in Harrison, in Mississippi that would qualify for it. You had to be, you had to have over two hundred thousand population.
But how are we gonna measure that? Send a note out? If you need help with your rent, call us, or what?
Call Pam.
It would be a process that they would have to go through, just like when we did the home program, when everybody got home program assistance for their first time homeowners. You had to, you know, you have to.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
You have to show where you lost your job and didn't pay you. It's you rental and utilities.
Yeah, actually, there's a portion of the grant that the county can use to hire an administrator.
I know, because I was, that's the part I worried.
Ninety percent has to be used for the rental assistance or utility assistance programs.
So you're gonna hire somebody to.
Jim Corber, who's a CPA, that does a lot of lit litigation for divorces and things like that, made him send an email. He's a fine person, affordable to consider.
He's a divorce attorney?
No, no, he does, like, he does, he does like business evaluation, not a attorney. He's an expert, a CPA, the CPA. But, but he, he sent it, that's where the emails are sent that.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And he, I'm not saying that's something the board would hire, but at least you have, the board, the county's not early. You're gonna hire somebody to administer a program.
Okay, so the first thing I need is a motion to.
To opt in.
Opt in and have our county administrator do the paperwork to see if the motion.
Second.
And further discussion. All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Pam, what else?
That's all I have.
Is that everything for everybody? Is that everything for everybody?
One thing, uh, I'm concerned about is are the taxes and the businesses that are suffering through COVID. Um, and we haven't had reappraisal yet, because we did delay that, but, um. I wondered if we can't look at, depending on the revenue, at giving small businesses and, um. Some tax relief because of what they've gone through with very little help from the government.
Can we later do that?
Of course, if you lower the taxes, right, lower the mileage, but.
But not for certain businesses.
Not for certain businesses, but, but you gotta remember, most, I would say, just looking at building. That you're not gonna have a decrease in your abnormal assessment value, because there is a boom going on in building right now.
Yeah, you get to price the material, you can tell you how boom that happened.
And so, what?
I think it was just.
More, you know, something like sales tax, or.
But that's what she's referring to, is, um, and it probably your sales tax, some of these small mom's rock restaurants.
That fail, that.
Hurt them, that, or hang on by their fingernails and that.
You don't see that sales.
We have a whole, I mean, we have a whole, um, area of shopping centers that have declared bankruptcy already. And, I mean, I mean, these are big box stores, too.
Prominent, prominent, all over the country, and you gotta remember, that's a big problem for them, because all their tenants' toilets. So, they're, they're just getting, making such protection to slow things down, hopefully they'll recover, but. I'm not sure what the county can do in that area, that is a potential, uh, I don't think that's gonna lower abnormal taxes. On that one center, because that's not really the, the thing, the property's not the problem, it's the absence of their tenants, because of COVID. I mean, it's something to look at, but I'm not sure what the county can do, can't do.
We, we did, uh, after Katrina, and insurance rates went up so high, we had districts, and we made the districts, uh, seven, we made them for seven years. We lowered their taxes to offset the cost of, um, the insurance, so, um.
I think the city go for it, and that.
No, we did that, the county, I took it to the businessmen's club, I'm sure, like, whatever. But we did it countywide.
We do it, we want it, can't do it.
Yeah.
I need to see, yeah, how this is gonna go, but I do have one other thing that I forgot, I apologize. The youth corps, the youth center trader, the county's trader for resource. Center, I guess, is what it's called, and so my thought process is, it's, we've never approved that, correct?
Not officially, no.
Officially.
So they're doing like a lot of press on that resource center, which has not been approved by the county, so I just will make sure I didn't miss something.
Well, I mean, I know that, I mean, they've, they've called and asked every time they needed to go into the little, get it for somebody, get something for somebody, that's all I know.
Yeah.
So, the, the only thing that, I think their advertising was to come, not what's going on now, but. And the board needs to determine, this little building they want to rent right over here, they, they, they did go back and negotiate a lower rate, but it's still pretty high.
Well, I'm waiting on that lease, so we'll discuss that when that gets here, but right now, on that trader with the resource. First of all, this is kinda getting out of hand, because, and I, I'm not picking on the senior companions or anything today, but it seems that way. But there's a resource center out there that is just, uh, which is can't keep taking people's stuff like that. I mean, it's getting out of hand, and storage is, it's floor to ceiling, you can't walk in there. And that's what I saw at the resource center, and even though it was very nicely organized, it was still floor to ceiling stuff. And I, and it just bothers me that, when are we gonna stop it, every day, people drop more and more and more of their stuff off. And I'm, I don't know what the answer is, but I was thinking, maybe we need to talk to Goodwill and get vouchers. For the people, and just give them a voucher as opposed to taking the stuff that we, and I, generally have that stuff behind that sand beach, it's all moldy, it needs to. Be purged anyway, I don't know when's the last time y'all were in there, it's terrible.
Well, the youth corps, I don't know, but.
No, there's a huge, oh my lord, behind the sand beach, and we've been there forever.
Is that what you're talking about?
I will tell the board what the legal status of it is, because I question whether or not the county could take in, as we talked about.
It's getting to be too high.
Take in donations and then give it away to anyone. Board may remember an issue with the drug court giving away, uh, gift cards, twenty-five dollar gift cards, like.
Right.
TBI Friday, and the AOC gave an opinion saying that they could do it under the statute that allows you to give it for drug intervention programs. They allow them to give, give, uh, gift cards away, which has always been said no of AG's office. Uh, Justice, or Judge Dickinson contacted the AOC, AOC has now sent saying that that same thing applies to taking in donations. And giving them to people under the drug intervention program at youth courts, so that's their justification, I have recommended, and we are in the process of drafting. Give an AG's opinion to confirm that, because that's what protects the board.
Well, while you're asking, ask about the seniors, because we got a bigger problem with that. Now, the medical, sometimes they'll bring medical stuff, a friend of mine just took some, and that I kinda see like walkers or cans or that. But this ton and ton and tons and tons and tons of clothing is what's out, so out of hand.
I understand, it's not something, in my opinion, the county can do.
I don't think we need to be in that business. So can, Pam, can we ask them to hold up on that, until, on collecting anything else until we get to say G's opinion? Because it's not like they have anywhere to put it anywhere.
The, the general rule is, if the county takes a donation, it becomes county property, it's like any county property. It has to be dealt with under the law, to even dispose of the county property. It can be donated, it can be given away unless there's specific statutory authority to do that. Now, there are statutes that allow the county to donate to certain entities, uh. Where it costs, so that stuff could be donated to one of Goodwill, I'm not sure where, I was. Just, just to dispose of it, the county can dispose of it, now Judge, uh, Judge Dickinson and AOC has confirmed that. That they, they've actually set a policy, which you said to me that they have, it's not directed toward clothing and things like that, but it can be adopted. But it has to document that people getting the stuff are in that FIP program, what they call it.
But that's, that doesn't, that's gonna solve the other issue we have.
I understand, the other issue, supper's different than that, but it can, with that.
Okay, would you mind doing that, and we'll ask our county administrator to, maybe Claire, stop to this, to.
Just collecting, he's collecting pretty good.
Yeah.
I just refer to Salvation Army or Goodwill.
Well, that's what, and I thought at one time, now, they've got a new guy at the Goodwill now, but the guy I knew. At one time, he would let you bring stuff, I was on the Red Cross board, and the Red Cross, who would tell people, we can't take your stuff, but take it to Goodwill. And the Red Cross would get credit for it, so then they'd have five dollar vouchers, so if they had somebody who came there because their house burned down. Red Cross would then give them this voucher to go to Goodwill.
Right.
To me, that'd be a whole lot easier deal than collecting stuff to the senior.
You know, a solution, just a suggestion, it might be is to contract with somebody like Salvation Army or something to actually, the stuff could still be received at the. Senior citizens centers, but be administered by Salvation Army, so that all we're doing is a conduit, and we're not taking, we're not being donated to.
We still got the stores, the, that, that, and then you got three or four employees that have to sit there and store it out, make sure it's clean and better.
And they're limited, limited to, because of COVID.
Right.
You can't just drop off stuff and wash it clean and do it.
Correct, so it's, it's very labor intensive, that stuff that I don't think the county.
I was surprised at the youth corps. Resource center, I was.
Okay, I think that's it, I do have one thing, the Deaville High School football advertising county resources, I'd like to do a. Six hundred dollar outside outfield facing banner, so can I have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Can I have a second, any discussion, all those in favor, signify by the eye, all those opposed, motion carries. Anybody got anything else? Brittany, then in that case, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is that it?
Any discussion, all those in favor, signify by the eye.
Uh, so, can I have one, can I get open just one thing, make sure our guy did have something to do with that. Um, MAS sent out, uh, did y'all get that information on, uh, for employees to go up the, the relief fund?
Oh, no, I didn't see that, you're talking about the next event.
Yeah, hold on just a sec. Yeah, my goodness, Kiana, um, it says, the Mississippi Association Supervisors established, the Mississippi Association Supervisors Disaster Relief Fund. The purpose of assisting qualified county employees who have suffered as a result of a natural disaster, this is from Hurricane Zeta. Um, and it's up to, if any of you of them have had out-of-pocket expenses of at least a thousand dollars. So.
I would like to fish.
They could submit to, and it goes through the MAS, submit information, so is this okay for us to distribute it out to the county?
I would, yeah. And I mean, yeah, supervisors are not qualified.
Right. And the, 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 no, 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 supervisor, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Did they have to be employed?